Okay, it's, you know, it's my policy never to punish the punctuals, so we will get started. And really pleased to be able to introduce Councilwoman from District Two, Tessa Abeta. And I want to thank Jan Thompson for recommending Councilwoman Abeta to be our speaker. So, thank you very much, Jane, for that. And also, Jane, while I've got your attention, stay on the line at the end of the service just for a few minutes for some last-minute base touching about next week.
Okay.
And, no, Jan.
Jan, okay.
Okay, so without any further ado, I will turn the floor over to, you know, Councilor Abeta.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for joining us on this Sunday. I'm really pleased to be here and to be chatting with all of you. I see some familiar faces, so that is very nice. And you want something? I have a short little presentation, just giving a light overview of sort of what's been happening in different areas in the city and within the district. And then afterwards, I'm just going to open it up for us to have a conversation, which I feel is really sometimes the best way for us to discuss what our community needs together. And that's the thing that I look most forward to when talking with the community. So, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, just give a thumbs up if you can see that. Does anyone see a thumbs up? Thank you. And I am going to play, hang on. Okay, so for those of you who may not be aware, District Two is going to be located in this blue area and everything basically south of Missouri Avenue. And so, as you can see, it's way up here, right by Centennial High School, all the way down to Macia Park. And while it doesn't represent the university itself, it is located all around. So, one of the things that's really unique about our district is we're pretty established, except for some of these southern areas. So, we have a lot of aged infrastructure, especially along the sides of between Valley and Trevees and right where you're located as well. So, that's been an issue that I think the community has really expressed their concerns about from the beginning, when I was canvassing about almost three years ago. Okay. And so, for a quick introductions, of course, I'm Tessa Abeta, and I am within, I'm two years into my term. And I wanted to really bring about an introduction with our city manager, Mr. Epo Peely. I'm not sure if I've had the opportunity to introduce him to you all, because I know, I believe, I've spoken with your group at least once before in the very beginning. And I talked about how our city manager was one of the most important roles within our community, and that is based on the form of government that we have. For while we, as city councilors, represent the will, I think, of the people and of our districts, our city manager represents the day-to-day and is the one employee of the city council. So, while we can direct Mr. Peely to carry out the wishes of the council, we are not allowed to direct staff in the same way. And so, it kind of is a little separation of the duties. And it's really good, I think, on an HR standpoint and to make sure that staff is able to carry out the vital functions without being swayed perhaps by, I would say, an unruly counselor or individual, you know, so that there's a good process in order. So, Mr. Peely was hired a little over a year and a half ago. And I was really impressed when we got to meet him. He hails from Utah, Eagle Mountain, Utah, where he had a very, very strong background in economic development, which we know, being a town, almost city, with a university, we want to be able to increase opportunities for young adults to stay here, to increase that economic base, and to make things happen in the city. He also, I would say, has a good heart, and for me, that means a lot as well. Next up, I have a few updates with District Two. As I said before, one of the issues with our district is that it is pretty well-established, which can be really great, but also, when I came in two years ago, what I found is that there wasn't a lot going on. There was no new projects happening, and there was no real excitement, I would say, that we were seeing in some of the other districts, whether it was parks, public art, you know, a new building that was going to provide a special type of service. We really weren't seeing any of that. And so, what I did was took a lot of the information that was given to me. Like you said, when I was canvassing, I talked to a lot of neighbors, kind of put it all together, and then looked to see what the needs were. And what we kind of came up with was Tony Gomez Park and Franger Park really provided a vital service for our community. It's located right off of Espina. And I would say, the easiest way to describe it, if you don't know where these are at, is near Boba Cafe. And these parks are utilized by so many people, including a lot of apartment complexes and even mobile home complexes. During COVID, these individuals, they didn't have backyards or big spaces to be able to really go around or do anything. And this park became a really great space for them to get out and at least have a little bit of room. But these parks are outdated, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. With Tony Gomez Park, the playground is outdated. There's some lighting issues that need to happen. And both parks are retention ponds to begin with. And this is a common problem in our district. And I say it's a problem because back when developers were giving spaces away for parks in our community, what they ended up doing with a lot of the spaces was giving away what were retention ponds. And so, the usable space that the community has, where we can put down equipment or we can put extra special things on, actually can't happen because the space has to be cleared for that water. And so, what you end up having is just a little tiny space that can be used for the public. And then, it is very nice, open space, but it's not usable space. And I, I think that is a problem. And as we move forward, that's something that I want to see changed when we do different types of development, that when we give out spaces, that the whole space is usable to its fullest extent. With that in mind, with Tony Gomez Park and Franger Park, if these items are outdated, we want to make sure that they are replaced in a timely manner. Tony Gomez also has issues with its parking lot. It is unpaved, and it is a little bit problematic how you get in and out. With Franger Park, we have Franger Pool, which is very well-loved and used. However, it is in a great need of repair, and it's going to eventually go offline. And what we don't want to see is an empty space that could attract, you know, any type of problems. And so, we want to have a good plan and budget before that goes offline. Item number two is our GOVON update. A few years ago, you all voted to accept some GOVONS, about $23 million worth, which we're able to provide a new fire station, which we just did the ribbon cutting for, increasing our animal service center, lots of updates with trails and parks, and I'm forgetting one more. But there was a lot of different things that were put through. Now, we're coming up to a new bond cycle, and we are asking from input in the, for the public on what types of ideas that people would like to see in this new GOVON cycle. We've committed to just doing the same amount of money so that there'll be no increase, no new tax rate, anything like that. It's going to be the same amount, and we've already seen a lot of interest in areas such as housing, older youth centers that could be multipurpose for seniors and for youth. And I believe there's been a few other sports-type items that are wanting to happen. But we are still accepting lots of public input for that before the questions get written and those are put on the ballot in November. Item number three is our fiscal budget for 2023. We are currently in our process of looking at what the budget is going to be for the city. And we will be having open discussions and public comment here soon. I don't have the date for you yet because it's still being written out, but for everybody to look to see what we have going on. Council itself has put up a lot of priorities, and a lot of ours do focus heavily on housing needs of our community. I do have a special interest in things like road improvement, of course, the parks, and then a few other items. One of the biggest changes that we did this year for our employees was we changed healthcare services. And while that may not seem like a fun topic, it was one of the biggest issues that we saw coming in two years ago with employees, is that it was very, very costly for them to have insurance, just basic health insurance. And so, we really advocated with our city manager, asking for other options for our employees. And we were able to get onto a different cycle and basically save individuals. Really, it was about $200 to $600 a month, depending on which plan they were at. And that is really a quality-of-life issue for a lot of people. We had firefighters that were dropping their level of coverage because they just couldn't afford it. And I don't, I think that's something that we don't want to see anybody have to do, especially when they're in a profession that has a higher increase of possible, you know, complications or need for those types of services. And the item number four that I have is a new project that has been mentioned and ready to debut, but it is called Lift Up Last Traces. And it is in response to kind of what we're seeing a lot of. There has been an increase in some types of crime, especially when it comes to like break-ins, vehicle break-ins, things like that. And what this will do is it takes a look at our community in different ways. And I want to preface it by saying that this is really a collaboration from council to staff to community, all working together to hopefully change areas. So, what it does is it takes a look at crime rates and overlaps different types of mapping systems, including poverty indexes together, to come up with basically hotspots in our community. And from there, we look, how do we address these needs? And is it with infrastructure improvements, so roads, lighting, programs and services? Everything from senior meals to the parks to after-school programs. It's looking at extra community services that might be needed. And so, what our intention is, is to look at these areas. And when we identify an area, hit it really hard with all these services, all these improvements to kind of change and bring up that area to try to improve what is happening. And then, after we do that, get people with these supportive systems, then we'll move on to the next zone. And we're hopeful, I believe, to do one or two a year, pending on funding. But it is a way, we think, to at least try to change a community for the better. And what we can do later on as well is by looking and bringing out these mapping systems together, we can start being proactive in areas instead of just reactive. And so, we're very excited about this, and we'll be collecting data as we work on these projects. I did want to bring up, I know everybody was very, very patient in our district as we had the I-25 construction. Obviously, that is finished. We have the roundabouts. I am always very skeptical about roundabouts, but things have been going so far. I haven't had any complaints, so I hope it's been working for you all. But I did want to say a special thank you to everyone for working with our community and with NMDOT as they got this project finished. And even though they did have COVID during this time, and there were some supply chain issues, the project did finish pretty much on time. It wasn't delayed as much as it could have been, and so, we just want to say thank you. So, we often have frequently questions or issues that come up, and these are just some of the areas that I see most. And I'm not really going in order here, but I'm just going to pick out. But of course, I think housing needs are one of the biggest questions that are brought up, issues that we see, and that housing needs as affordable housing. We've seen prices jump recently, and we've had a report that, you know, we are about 5,600 units short in our community. And so, we have to say, how do we approach that? And so, one of the way, in our district, we don't have a ton of growth on the outside, but we do have opportunities for infill. And so, we want to make sure that we are streamlining processes to really encourage developers to work within those infill spaces and see what we're doing. In our community, I believe we do have one project coming up near El Paso, near the high school, and it is for senior housing. And I believe it's going to be apartments, but it is specific for a community. I believe it's going to be about 55-plus. And so, that is something, it hasn't reached council yet. I believe it's still in planning and zoning, but that should be coming to us as well. But there's other areas and spaces that we've seen that are starting to be improved. There's another one off of Bouts, right at the edge of our district. That was brought two years ago. It's actually one of the first items that I had to vote on, was for, it is for apartments in that area. And that are going to be, I believe, pretty affordable for most people. And so, we are seeing some of that, but of course, it's probably not quite at the pace that we need to really catch things up. We have heard a lot of safety concerns. Of course, during the last two years, we've had, seen a little bit of change in the types of issues that we've been seeing. We do have had some break-ins. We've had car thefts, and we've asked for special work sessions about some of these issues. One of the biggest problems in our district was actually that of car thefts. However, about 80% of those were crimes of opportunity with individuals who had not locked their vehicle. So, that is an educational point, but also, we are working on, you know, what is causing people to, you know, do some of these activities. And so, that is something that we have to look at. Of course, we have code-related issues as well. Everything from trash to, you know, there are some issues with those that are experiencing homelessness. Sometimes falls under codes as well, and so, those are the different types of calls that I get. With policy changes, like I said, we have had the different ones with everything from our insurance to kind of making sure that we are looking at different ordinances. I chair a quality-of-life policy review committee. Coming before us is a look at the UTV ordinance that was passed a couple, about a year ago, to see if there's any changes that need to be made on it, and if it is still okay. And a noise ordinance. There had been complaints, especially alongside Amador, and then that of cars racing. And so, we were looking at different ways to work with those two issues. And of course, we have different community discussions with different leaders and partners within our community. So, board participation is very important. All of us councilors are assigned different committees to sit on. And now, I made a few changes with the onboarding of our two new councilors, Becky Coran and Becky Graham. And so, I have switched a few of my committees because I wanted to be able to tailor a little bit of what I was seeing and specialize a little bit more. I think we're all, you have to be a generalist, I think, to be on the council. You have to know a lot and with a lot of different areas. But it is good to be able to piece things together in constructive ways. And I wanted to be able to do that. And for me, it starts out with what is quality of life. As I mentioned before, I'm chair of our quality-of-life committee, and I see that in a lot of different ways. And that is with, from economic development to public safety, which I do not have on here, but I need to. There's just a lot of different ways that quality of life comes to be. And so, I wanted to participate, and I sat on the Economic Development Policy Review Committee. I actually also serve as the council member that serves with MEBITO, which is an economic development alliance, so they tie in together. I sat as the vice chair of our El Paso corridor ad hoc committee, which has just ended, but we are continuing the recommendations for the revitalization of the El Paso corridor, which we expanded it from El Paso all the way up to Trevees and all the way up to university itself. We really wanted to get that full interior available for the different types of opportunities for revitalization. I now sit on our utilities committee, which has been very, very interesting. Everything from our wastewater to gas. And so, that just started in January. I sit on the juvenile justice continuum and our public safety select committee, our oversight committee, university of district design. And I also serve on a, it's called the CAP committee, and it is with El Paso Electric. But it is just a ad hoc committee that looks at how they interact with the public and the different types of ways that they can improve community outreach and service. And with our conversation, I'm hopeful that you'll have questions about these and can ask me a little bit more, because I know there's a lot within each one of these. And with our future ideas, of course, there's district improvements. I'd love to be able to hear what you see the needs of our district are. And with that, some of them can be quite big, and so, that would be within our capital outlay projects, things that we need to look for in the future and those different types of budgeting items. As I said before, we are currently under process for a 2023 budget, and there will be a public input session. And as soon as that's done, I'm happy to give that information to David to make sure that you all, if you'd like to participate. So, that's a basic overview. And like I said, I think that the conversation that we have is very helpful, and I'm excited to hear what you all have to say.
Thank you very much, Councilor. And I suspect most of you saw Jan's note in chat that her internet is not cooperating with her. And so, I think that's why she's not with us right now, and I hope that she's able to rejoin us. Okay, this is our time to ask District Two Councilor of any questions that we might have about, you know, our neighborhood, our congregation's neighborhood, and get her, her input. So, who would like to be the first one up with a question or a comment? Charlie, thank you.
Yes, I'm interested in the Franger area. And I don't know if it's like, is it a park at one end and the water impoundment at the other end? Or is it considered a do and use the whole thing? And where is that likely to go? We love having that impoundment area available as a park.
Yeah, so, and sorry, I'm having a little tiny bit of her time hearing you, but I think I got most of the question, and if I missed anything, we'll come back to it. But with Franger, those parks, everything stays there, and the water, basically, it is funneled in. So, it kind of seeps up. Now, drainage, I think, is an issue because there are, you know, mosquitoes, things like that that can collect debris. And so, it's making sure that we have probably a little bit of a clearer drainage for everything. And that should go underlying for our, in our pipe system. But then, any of the free space, if it's within that big bowl area, and here, I'm going to use something. Okay, so basically, a shape like that. If it's anything within the bowl area, then it cannot have any type of equipment or be utilized with anything permanent really within those spaces, which is good for open area, but not really great if we're, you know, we couldn't even put a trail or a walking path through that, anything like that. And so, it's space, but it's not meant to be a space to be used. And so, what you find, the space that is used, is elevated a little bit and off to the side. And it's with that with both parks. So, Franger is where the pool is at, basically, in that little parking lot. That's, that's all you, and I think there's a little tiny, tiny little park on the side. So, that's all you get. That's the only usable space. And then, with Tony Gomez, you have little tiny usable space. Now, there, they were able to put one spot for like T-ball, because I know they practice a lot in there. But the big, big open space can't really have anything designated in it.
Okay, so, that was basically the question on Franger. You're not going to, even though it's not designated, you don't keep people off of it, right?
No, no. It just means that we can't put that specific equipment or like table, shade, anything like that, when it be able to be put in those spaces.
Wonderful, thank you.
Dave Rice, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a question. You'd mentioned a number of the various committees that you were involved with, and I appreciate your giving us the broad overview. But with those committees in mind, how does, how do those committees then work with the various departments that are under the city manager? I mean, you mentioned, made the point that there's that division. Are those committees sort of information gathering pieces that feed into the city manager? How does that work?
Yeah, that is a great question. With that, we do have city staff that is assigned. So, usually with a director or assistant director. So, we are able to communicate, and with that, there is information. Something is brought to us, say, an ordinance. But we are the policymakers, so we do get to give direction on some of those items. Now, there's only, we cannot have a quorum and do any final decisions within those policy areas. So, they're met as kind of a review and I would say, a first draft of what's going on. So, we can look at an issue, tailor it, and then move it forward. You see that in a state legislature where you have committees and you can kind of edit things, talk about the logistics of an issue. And then make a bit of those changes. And so that when it comes to the council as a full, that it does better. It's also where some of the ideas can come through with our. I previously served on our Health Policy Review Committee. And from there, one of the ideas that came through was that of having basically our mobile crisis units. So that's where we, as counselors, had the idea is to address those that are experiencing mental health crisis. That we will have these specific units that we've already funded and should be trained online by January. Though we've asked if there's any way to push that faster, that we will do whatever it takes on our end to make sure that can happen. But to have these crisis units out. So that's where you can take an idea, something that we say, and then actually put it into fruition. My goal with the policy review committees that I chair is for us to have from idea. To council approval within about a four to five month span, which sounds like a long time. But when you take things like if there's legal implications or other types of considerations. It's a pretty quick turnaround for for government, I say.
Jane Ash.
Yes, Tessa, you mentioned the fact that we're. Six hundred plus short housing units in the city. And, you know, I have followed over the years, the work of those who are working to. Increase affordable housing. What is the council doing right now to. See if they can't ramp up the efforts for affordable housing? Because I know this has a tremendous impact on families.
Absolutely. One of the ideas that came through the El Paso. Revitalization project was that of affordable housing within that area. So we do have a plan on, it's called. Sale Verdes. And it's with our, within that space. And it would be with affordable housing from senior to family and mixed use. But seeing what we can do there and then helping with, like I said, that encouragement of building infill. And so if there's any types of, I know we're looking at not TIDS, but different like funding mechanisms. And MRNAs and different types of things like that, to see what we can do to encourage that. At the same time, making sure that within community development, that we're able to have a streamlined process. For those that are for builders and contractors. One of the things that we were able to do was really pivot during COVID. And instead of stopping some of those like inspections, things like that, we ended up using technology for our benefit. Much like you use Zoom, we ended up being able to use that type of technology. And I guess Zoom technology to go have contractors and people go out so we could still keep those processes moving. And so we weren't stopping on any of that construction. And so I think if we can use that, look at what incentives we can give. And then at the same time, like I said, we have these GO bonds that we have talked about. And there has been a push for housing. But, you know, in all honesty, $23 million to affordable housing won't go quite as far as what is necessary. It would, it would really need to take up the whole entire thing. And so we're also looking at how do we help or partner with other individuals. There is. An entity that comes in and it has bought some of the hotels that are no longer in service. And revitalized them, made them more like efficiencies. And that can be kind of rapid housing for people that is very affordable and safe and changes up that. Area from being, you know, not utilized at all and perhaps a safety hazard to something that can be. So I think it's just taking all those little pieces together. And obviously, it's not going to be quite as fast as we need. But hopefully, it will be something. And then on the one, the one thing that we are working on. And I think it's a question, in all honesty, it's a question that we don't have quite answered yet. There is a certain demographic of individuals that have severe mental health needs or substance use needs. That do not want to be housed and don't want to, like, they don't want to be a participant in something like Community of Hope. Because of the restrictions that are there. And so the unanswered question is, how do we help these individuals? That are experiencing these when we don't necessarily have the capability? We don't have long-term, you know, substance use hospitals. We don't have some of those things. And so that is, that is still a question that we have to try to answer. And that's the hard one. That's a really hard one.
Thank you.
Alisa, and just before you get started, Jane and Dave, you still have your virtual hands up unless you've got them up. Okay, Alisa.
Tessa, gracias for your, for your presentation and for your question. I want to ask some questions about housing. I think that I thought I had heard that there was a, a plan to do a little, the tiny villages, the tiny houses village. Is that still an option?
So I think that was in the Amador Proximo. I think that was possibly in that. Now, I know that we've, we've pulled those off the shelf too, to look at that area to see what can. What can we do and what can we revitalize as well? So I don't know specifics on that. But I think there, there are a lot of plans out in play. I know. The thing that I'm focusing on is that the sale of this because it is part of that El Paso revitalization. So that's where my focus mostly is on. But I know that we're bringing up the, the Amador Proximo plans as well. And I think that's where they were thinking about some of those, like more of that tiny home projects. And possibly, this could be where your advocates that are talking about affordable housing or public housing. Are thinking about too, if it was used in GO bonds.
I have a second question. Tessa, you mentioned that you're interested in the quality of life. You know, but you didn't mention things like the cultural center and what kinds of, what kinds of exhibits it's put. Now, you know, I have a friend who's done several exhibits that have to do with Latinos and Mexicans in this state. And she's had really terrible times with that staff. Now, I understand you can't go to staff, but you can go to the scout, to the city manager. But I know that's been a real problem in terms of getting some nice current and relevant exhibits.
You know, I'm so glad you brought that up. You know, that is a critique that we heard especially at the beginning. With, with that quality of life PRC, we have a wonderful committee. We do have a resident, his name is Diego Medina. I don't know if you know who he is, but he. He is part of the. Tiwa Monzo tribe here. And I'm sorry, I'm forgetting one more. I know that it's three. But we've talked heavily about that of our culture and how do we expand to be really inclusive of the full story? Especially here in New Mexico and in Las Cruces, that we. When we look at everything from our art, from our history, we often see that kind of erasure. So how do we make sure that we are being really inclusive? He did a full presentation for us about the tribe and their baseball team, the Jack Rabbits that were here and provided so much. And so we want to make sure that we're taking those into consideration at the very start of a project. And so when we're looking at art, when we're looking at all that and having those conversations. So I think that's, that's an issue we heard really clearly. We heard it even with our visit Las Cruces website. That when we went there, we were acknowledging the history, the true history of it. We had a lot about Spanish settlement and things like that, but we weren't being inclusive. And so just making sure that we're changing that context at the beginning and putting it at the forefront.
Just a quick word, preview of coming attractions, Mr. Medina is going to be our roundtable speaker on Sunday, the 29th of May. So.
He is an amazing human. And I think he, he has such a, a great understanding and background and knowledge. So that will be, that will be wonderful.
Yeah, right. And a big thank you to Jane Ash who facilitated that for me. So let's see, Janet Martinique and then Dave Rice and then Vijay.
Okay. My question is about business development. Is there a team for business development? I'm hearing from graduates of the university that they know when they graduate, they have to leave Las Cruces. Because there's no opportunities here. So what are we doing to draw business here? That has, has career type jobs available?
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that we want to make sure is that people want to stay here and have those opportunities. And so we want to look at what those career paths are. Now, the market has turned. Where we have a great need for employees, especially skilled employees in a lot of different areas. And so we want to make sure that when we are attracting businesses, that we are attracting businesses that pay competitive wages. And that people are excited about that. And it's not just, I don't think it's just about money anymore either. It's what type of work environment and culture do these companies bring in? So we have a few different areas. We do have a full economic development sector. It's led by Elizabeth Teeters. And her deputy is Dr. Francisco Pyattis. And both of them have really done a lot to do two things. One, we're looking at our, we have our industrial park. Up by the airport as well and attracting larger businesses for this. This is everything. We just accepted a project. It's for Artico and they do cold storage, which seems fine. But it's a connector. It's such a great connector that when other companies want to come in, we have to look at supply chain. Chains that have kind of turned in, having a cold storage facility can increase other companies to want to come in too. Have a few other projects in the works. And unfortunately, I cannot talk about those too much. And I don't want to, you know, I always keep my fingers crossed with everything. But what we're looking at is making sure that we are. Also developing career pathways too. So if we're talking about wanting to bring in. Different types of. Will use, will use gaming. Since we had a company come in that was on video game development, which we were, you know, thinking would be a great little. Niche to do because they can still apply for some of the film credits tax, they kind of fall under that. So we have programs here at the university with film and with gaming and coding. And so making sure that you're connecting those students with those businesses. We've been having a lot of different career fairs that we've been placing in different matches and working extensively. With DACC and NMSU to make sure that we're pulling in those individuals. In our utilities department, we take on interns and we've tried to increase that. So that when we take on these interns, most of them want to stay and work for us. Great. We learned a special fact that in our, in New Mexico as a whole, there are only like 400 licensed plumbers. Which is not a lot.
No.
So, and when we have specific utility needs, you have to have these higher level licensed individuals to be able to work on this equipment. And so we want to make sure that we are also training up as well. And so those are a few of the, the items, but really partnering, seeing what we can do. And I think internships are an amazing way to retain individuals too. Because you want them to feel part of their community. And it's a great way to start keeping that. I myself am getting my very first intern. I believe she will be starting in about a week or two. She's been approved. And she is an Ag student from NMSU, but she wants to learn more and wants to help in different ways. And so I'm very excited. So anytime we can pair and do those internships, I think is a really great opportunity.
Okay, I'm glad there's a lot being done. I also have a neighborhood question that. I have two streetlights at the corner of Venus and Mars that have been out for two years. And I can't find anybody to talk to me about it. And my landlord has tried to find out who's responsible for them. And no, we can't get anywhere.
Is it on the corner of Venus and Mars?
Yeah, it's one is on the, they're both on Venus, but they're both at the corners on each side of Mars.
Okay, so that is great. I wonder, do you mind if I share my screen again, Dave?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I pulled up a few of my, let's see, I pulled up a few. You might see a lot of different tabs on my computer, so. Okay, we, if you do not know, we have different. I brought up a few different tabs for you to look at different types of information that we have. This one, so this one is about our general bonds. So we actually are able to showcase. Where we're at on projects for you all and what's being spent. We're going to do that because I think transparency is a great thing to do. So we have GO bonds and I believe this next one.
Tessa, I don't think we're seeing the screen that you're looking at. I'm not sure that.
Now, I just changed it.
Okay.
Okay, we have, like I said, I have like four screens up. Okay, so we have pavement management and street maintenance. So within our City of Las Cruces website here, if you ever do see an, an issue. You can go and go to our Ask, the 311 Ask Las Cruces portal. And hopefully. There we go. So if there is an issue now.
Now, we're still seeing yours PowerPoint, Tessa.
You're still seeing the PowerPoint? Okay, let me stand and then we'll retry.
I assume that you are trying to show the city website.
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Did that work out for you? Okay.
It did.
Okay, so what I'll do, I'll, I'll just, I'll share a link. I'll just give the link in the chat. How's that? That might be. But what it is, it is our little portal. And so you can report everything from potholes to street things. However, don't worry about this one. I'll report this issue on it. I like, I like to do it to actually test the system because we're supposed to be able. For potholes, if you put in a pothole request, it is supposed to be fixed within 48 hours. So I like to test those systems and just place it and see if they're going through all right. So.
Okay, so I go to the LC website and there's a. Oh, I see.
So I just put that.
Okay. Forte.com, okay.
But I have this one in. So like I said, I'll put in the request, if you don't mind, Monday morning. And sorry if you can hear my kiddles.
Okay, Dave Rice has another question and then we'll move to you, Vijay.
I'll defer to Vijay. She hasn't had a question.
Okay, thank you, Vijay. You're muted there.
No.
I also have a neighborhood question. A lot of apartments on Beck Street. What are they just apartments or are if that does that locality come under affordable housing?
They're just apartments. And from what I've gathered, they are also owned by different individuals. I just did a ride along with our codes department about two weeks ago. And we drove through that area with the Beck's apartments. And so what is said is some of them are owned by, like each of those standalone units can be owned by multiple people. It could be owned by somebody who then rents them out. So they're not, there's no uniform standard over there. So it's kind of whoever owns it.
The problem is we have had three murders, three shootings in that on Beck Street in last two or three years, I think. Also, my neighbor, they windowed somebody through a rock through their window on Hickson Drive. And this happened between last Wednesday and yesterday. So there seems to be a lot of not so good things happening in the neighborhood. This look, this neighborhood was all university professors, but all of a sudden we are seeing a lot of other stuff going on.
Yeah. And you know, one of the things that I will say that a lot of the shootings that we've seen, especially the ones that you've seen in the news, that the individuals didn't know each other beforehand, at least that's been reported now. It hasn't been fully finalized, but from what has been gathered that the police have been able to apprehend for the shootings, the responsible, allegedly responsible parties. And so that's, that is one thing. We do have, what we've been working on is our community policing department. And those individuals building up rapport in those communities has been, I think it's a good way to kind of build up that safety and trust. One of the things that we did earlier is we just had an event once at Tony Gomez Park to kind of help with the the community. But we are trying to increase that. We've seen along Farney, I believe, there was some issues too with some breaking in and our community policing was able to identify who was doing that. And it was a bored youth, unfortunately. And so where we have to look at those root cause problems. So what is also causing people to do some of this? We've had a very difficult two years for people and some individuals are responding in inappropriate ways. There is a lot of people that are substance using and that is causing other issues. And so we have to look to see what we can do to address those root cause problems as well.
Also, I have another question about the neighborhood also. On turn time across from IHOP, we see a piece of land they have been throwing more and more dirt over there. It seems like to increase the elevation for building something. Do you know what that might be?
I think I'll have to get back to you on that one. I don't know offhand if that's which one that might be okay.
Okay.
Dave Rice?
Okay, yeah, it's not clear to me, Counselor, if your district encompasses the district along the area along university where the university had been talking about new developments that are what what seem to be contiguous to tribal lands or one time tribal lands out toward Tortugas Mountain. Is that something within the city or is that something that's outside the city's jurisdiction?
That would be outside the city's jurisdiction. And so I'm assuming you're you're talking about the right by the golf course.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's outside ours. But I would say this is this is a question though about that type of development. It is going to take it's going to take a while for that to be done. Initially, it was going to have a lot of office space and different types of even like retail type items, but I think the changing environment, it would have to be developed a little bit differently. But I think Ms. Sanchez kind of brought up that we have to talk with our vested partners and with our indigenous communities about these types of things. And that's something that sounds like perhaps was not solidified. And the Piro Tiwa Manzo tribe, you know, they are not federally recognized right now, which has been kind of the concern and the problem. And so that sovereignty, I guess, is not as clearly laid out with that. And it's unfortunate because they they were here first. Oh, that's something that we have to to talk about.
Elisa, is your hand up anew or is that from the previous? Okay. Well, I have a quick question, but I'm not sure that the answer would necessarily be possible in the amount of time that we're we have available. But I am very curious about how city government interfaces with and our city representatives interface with our state representatives. Now, how much coordination is there? How much cooperation is there? Or are these two really separate silos that you know, rarely have an opportunity to interact in a meaningful way?
And counting.
I love those questions. I love those questions. So uniquely, previously, before I ran for city office, I wanted to make sure that I had really good relationships, at least professionally, with most of our state reps and different types of government individuals, because we do need to interact and we do need to have that type of open communication. We don't want to get siloed. And so I I know and try to interact very closely. I am right now because I want to see our airport developed more, want to see cylinder services.
With you.
For economic development. And we need to kind of work on those. We have to work and ask the state for money and because it's a big ask. We can't do it all at the municipality. And so I try to engage with them often. I've been asking for us to you know, meet with our state reps and have Mr. Peely meet with them a little bit sooner during interims. And because they need to feel connected to the community as well, especially if they fund items. So if they don't feel connected, they're not going to see those projects as valuable. And so we want to really make sure that they know what is going on. When they give capital outlay, that they see that those projects are coming to, you know, completion and things like that too. I will be going to DC in about two weeks with the Chamber of Commerce, but also with the city to talk to federal delegations about what the community needs. And so, I mean, it starts from the top and different types of grants and funding that we can have. Land needs. And so starting there and trying to interact. And then with the county, we have a lot of joint power agreements. And so something like our animal service center is both entities are together to help with that. And so we have to update a lot of these joint power agreements that we have to make sure that everybody's kind of giving their fair share, that, you know, we're up to date with all those policies. And so we have to interact in those ways too. And I will say a lot of things need updating. I won't lie, when we came in, that was one of the things you said to Mr. Peely is like, like some of these have not been updated in quite a few years and it just needs to get done. And so we're starting with those processes too. So I think communication is important. And I, it is something that I really like to do and and continue now. So that was a short, long answer to that and hopefully answered the question.
Thank you very much. And now it's it's time for us to, you know, to, you know, close up this session. I want to thank everybody for joining us and especially Counselor Abeta. Yeah, thank you very, very, very much for taking time out of your schedule. Your three kids. So yeah, thank them for us.
Thank you. Well, they're they're all hiding right over there where I was giving presentations.
Well, they they behave themselves nicely. So.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And you have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Bye bye. Sorry, Steve.
And if you have extra questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I, Dave, you have all my contact information. Please feel free to share it with the group and I'm happy to to respond back if you have other items.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm really sorry that Jan was not able to get back to us. Jan is going to be serving as our guest host next week. I'm going to be out of town in Arizona, helping to collect data on habitat of owls, wild creatures. So so she's going to be hosting our guest, a gentleman from who now resides in California. He's going to be talking about the the Milpas movement in Central America. That's a and 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 initiative to sort of encourage small landholders to return to the Milpas style of agriculture that had been practiced previously, that is much more and of ecologically sensitive and in the long run provides for better economic outcomes for a small landholder. So he's going to be speaking about that. And they're also going to be showing a 20 minute documentary, which I watched, which is very interesting. It's all in Spanish, but it has, you know, of, you know, subtitles. And had Jan been here, she could have, you know, given you a much more insightful preview of next week's meeting. But at any rate, I hope to see you all there for that. And again, my apologies, Steve, for not being able to take your question.
Well, let me say it anyway, because if I can get more disciples talking about this, maybe we'll get a chance of getting it fixed. You just said Jan couldn't get here. If you remember, you also said that the church wifi didn't work very well. This happens all the time here. We have a terrible internet system. It needs to be changed. This community has done an excellent job of taking over utilities where utility companies have failed or or won't respond, or it's not economically feasible for them to. Xfinity has done a rotten job for us. And I think the city ought to take it over. I think we ought to put up our own internet.
Good, good point. And maybe we could invite somebody for a future roundtable some experience and knowledge about the issues and what the barriers are to improve quality of our internet access.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and it is happening in a lot of places as a public solution.
It's not getting solved. And you know, this is with the COVID thing, it really unearthed how much of our population is underserved. Cannot get on the internet and these children are, well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Steve. That's that's a very good concern. So, okay. My thanks to all of you for being here today and.
Happy anniversary.
Oh, well, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Maybe invite maybe invite people from Xfinity and Comcast and see what they have to say, get have them together at the same time.
It's one and the same. Comcast is Xfinity.
Yeah.
That's the problem here. You have a choice. You can have DSL, which is stuff we used to have in the 80s. And or you can have Xfinity, which is unresponsive.
That's the choice.
That's the choice.
Yeah, and the solution is partly has to do with policy at the state level too. They're extremely aware of, you know, the problems with broadband in many places, especially rural communities. That's something that Sochi's working on up at the federal level. But to keep telling people and talking to them and contacting them helps them feel the pressure. I mean, she is a person who's very, very responsive to calls and and requests and inquiries from local citizens.
But we are not ruler, rural community.
Well, we're certainly not in New York.
Oh, well, or Chicago.
Yeah.
We got a lot of rural. It's statewide. It's pretty rural. Anyway, thank you, Dave.
Enjoy the rest of your Sundays, folks.
Thank you.
Have a have a great auction. Sorry, I won't be there, but I've got a I've I've got a proxy is going to take care of my my.
Only if you send. Only if you send instructions.
Only if you give him instructions.
I'm I'm going to.
You might pay dearly.
Bye bye. There's a guy who likes to spend other people's money.